Please. Okay, we'll call us back into session. That's our work session. Uh, the first item on the agenda is to assign titles for vehicles previously approved for auction.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve, uh, the signature of the chairman on, uh, the titles as presented.
You have a motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Next, Brayden, Chief of Staff, concerning follow-up discussion on where to house human resources.
Yep, so Brayden Clayson, Chief of Staff, um, this was something that I think Jeff or Terrell asked that we get on here just so we could, uh, go over and try to finalize what we are going to do with them. I think we've kind of got a plan in motion that might work. Um, but I didn't know if we wanted to get it up on here for approval and that way we'd get it rolling quicker.
Okay, Dan, why don't you come on up too, participating?
So I think we've kind of agreed that the storage room over here.
In the back of that courtroom, right, the storage room back there?
Yeah, that little seven foot.
Little seven foot by thirty thing?
But, but that's what it originally was, was files and storage and now, yeah, the judge is using it, but that was temporary. Correct? Am I, the right room, everybody?
Upstairs or downstairs?
Downstairs.
Downstairs.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Yeah, downstairs.
Downstairs.
The actual courtroom.
The small claims courtroom, correct.
The arraignments.
Arraignments, sorry, yeah.
Um, I don't, I don't believe we've had a conversation yet. I have not been able to talk to the Court Services Manager yet. I don't know if you have. But that would be my recommendation, is the arraignment courtroom is just simply, it was built in an era before technology happened and it looks like the arraignments are probably going to stay a majority in the digital world, so we have a lot of wasted space that's just not simply used anymore. Um, and even talking with a couple of the judges, uh, that are, yeah, that it's just not there. As long as we provide public seating still, we can cut that courtroom down in half and maximize the space. It keeps HR in the building. It allows them to be just down the hall from auditing, um, and it makes their job easier. Um, so you're not going back and forth. Um, it does, uh, keep it in a secured zone because there is some times that the HR that you deal with, uh, would do that. So my recommendation would be, um, uh, to go through and actually take that back half of the east side of the arraignment's courtroom and just basically frame a wall down the middle and frame two offices in and, um, a kind of an entryway and actually leave, we talked about it yesterday, actually leave that wall, that storage room, because then they can put all their files in there. And we don't have to tear it down then. There's no, there's no reason to do that then, and I didn't even think about that until you brought it up. Because we just leave it there and we just frame one, two, three walls and that's it.
Then if the court moves out, we can just turn that into a training room.
Yes. And then move the court upstairs.
Yeah, it could be right here.
Just by framing a couple of walls would be pretty inexpensive and efficient, so.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see it being.
Concerns?
I don't think so. I think we're in good shape with the fire sprinklers in that area. Um, we have some leftover parts and pieces from the restrooms I'd like to use up and get rid of. So I don't see a problem with it.
You were able to salvage off some steel studs and stuff like that?
It's actually, uh, the barrier that we tore down, we have quite a few studs. I, I saved all those.
Okay.
And, uh.
So we're able to reuse them?
Yep, and we've got a, a couple of extra door frames, you know, from the barrier as well, so that's a cost savings that I'd like to get those parts used up as well, so. I don't see any problem with it.
What would your timeframe be for being able to do that?
Um, I can start now. I have the tile guys going in the restrooms for probably five weeks. So I'm ready to go. Uh, I don't foresee anything that we'd have to order. That's the problem we run into is materials and, and, uh, how long they're taking to get here, so.
Do we sell carpet?
We do. We have a good, good batch of carpet we bought from, uh.
When we bought on that wholesale, when they were getting rid of a bunch of it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Trying to be careful about not running out of that, uh, style of carpet so that we can replace as we need. So we have a good stockpile right now that we could use.
Okay, have we identified costs and?
Um, I haven't seen a drawing. If you want me to go, you can measure it up and.
Yeah, I'm gonna need, I'll, I can get with you and we have a back of the napkin sketch, but we need an actual, um, I was gonna try and put it in PowerPoint and email it out to you, but I kinda got sidetracked yesterday.
No problem.
Okay.
And, and then identified where the funds are coming from on, you probably haven't even been talked to, huh?
That's what's, uh, that's really, this is what, you know, as fast as it went to, because we kinda realized that we need to move HR now.
But you're just thinking two offices and the entrance.
So let's, let's identify the funding source and, and talk to Court Services. Whether we talk or tell.
Well, we do need to just make sure that.
Notify.
Notify. Um, but we do need to have, uh, to make sure that we leave enough public seating in arraignments because you still have to have public seating to qualify under state law. So we just need to make sure we do that. As long as we do that, I don't really see a problem. You know, I mean, if, if that courtroom was used for jury trials or something else, it'd be a different story, but it's arraignments, that's it. And most of them, um, I sat the other day, one Judge Houston started and it was virtually, I think every single case was, was online. So I don't see why we're, you know, keeping a courtroom that's, you know, the biggest space in the, literally for that.
Do we need to formally incorporate funds once we get the dollar note?
Yeah. Yes.
If I can get a dollar note, I can, unless you guys already know where you're paying for it, I can try to find.
I don't think anyone's even talked about it.
No, that's, that's the discussion.
So just.
So we're, so yeah, a couple of steps we'll have to, I could.
If Terrell can get a drawing to dance, we can fit.
How about, uh, do we wanna have? How do you wanna move forward? Do you want me to go and talk with, uh?
Carrie?
Get, get Carrie involved?
I think it'd be.
And then a couple of us, or do you wanna, or would you rather have Carrie and Judge Naffs come in and talk in front of the entire commission in a meeting? Do you want me to warm them up to it first or?
Well, I, I think that the combination of you and Terrell, talk to them, tell them just, and then we can move forward.
I mean.
In my opinion, just, just because next week, we have Tuesday and then I'm, I'm out all next week.
Okay.
And Jeff's out after.
These guys are at.
Tuesday, we're going to.
Conference.
Council. So.
So, um, whenever, when we wanna approve funds.
We could do that on Tuesday.
It's gonna be really inexpensive, right? Because we're using a lot of leftover materials.
Recycling a bunch of stuff is the cool thing, so.
And that could actually be on the agenda for Tuesday.
Yeah.
So let's try to get costs for Tuesday so that everyone can approve it and where from.
I have the hand sketch downstairs.
We'll work on talking with the judge and.
Well, wanna put it on for next Tuesday then?
Yeah.
Yes, if you would please.
Hey, any other questions or concerns about it?
No.
I think we're good. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Just as we're talking about that though, we have to furnish the office too. So as we're talking about funds and things, that's, that's gotta be part of it. I mean, most of the computers and that kinda stuff will all just transfer down there, but. We have a information officer that will be here on the twelfth. Did, uh, Saturday approval form last Tuesday on that one. So that's, that's why things are kind of.
We're just working on top of each other for a little while?
And maybe you'll have better luck, maybe desks are better, but I know I talked to the officer's office last week and, uh, desks were sitting on boats.
Outside of the port to.
Yeah, but when we ordered ours for the accountant, we went through your line and we had it within days.
Yeah.
I wonder if we can work some more quarters.
That's who they've gone through.
Floating on the boat.
So maybe just look for lots of resources and maybe it'll be, maybe it won't be a problem.
That just needs to be part of.
Hey, a, a piece of three quarter, just a piece of three quarter plywood on. Old door, old door. Hey, we're in this recycling kick that Dan's got us on, uh, saving materials. Just put an old door on it.
Okay.
That'd be cool.
So you'll bring it back to us on Tuesday?
On Tuesday, we'll follow up.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, Shanda?
Shanda Crystal, purchasing and economic analyst. I wanted to come before the board just to, um, update the two commissioners on a meeting that Commissioner Tepe and I had with Bonneville County in regards to their conflict council and how they have it organized there, uh, for just ideas of how we wanted to move forward. Um, so this is not, uh, I'm not proposing to switch today. Um, that is a meeting that I would like to set for, um, about three weeks from now, um, when we can have all the players in the room. We can have Dave Martinez come and we can have Carrie Hong, potentially the judge, um, that as we work out how we want to move forward. Um, this was just an avenue of how that Bonneville had it set up, that I wanted to update the commission. So, um, they had a couple of different pieces in there, um, the way that they handle things. They have a public defender's office, just like we do. Um, they have an office of nine that they have in there that report directly back to their department head, that reports to the commission, just like we have here. In addition to what we have, they have an office of conflict council. They currently have four employees, they are employees, four people, um, that work in that office. They are assigned cases from the public defender's office, just like we do now. Um, except they report, the office of conflict council reports directly to the commission. So that is how they separate. They do get cases from the public defender's office, just like we do now with our contracts. However, those employees do not report back to the public defender's office. There's a different leg that they report directly to the commissioner's office. Uh, they also have, uh, very minimally, but it does happen, um, two, three times a year that they'll have a case that kind of extends outside of that conflict. If they have, you know, uh, multiple charges in the same drug case or something like that and they run out of conflict people available. Um, they do have a couple of outside contracts that are set on an hourly basis um, for those that extend beyond something that their office can currently handle. Um, so they have kind of a three-prong approach, right? They have public defenders, just like we have. They have an office of public counsel, which is different than what we have now. We have contracts. And then they have hourly contracts on top of that that would handle anything that their offices couldn't conflict out. Um, it was.
And we actually have that if it's ordered by a judge. That's one thing. We do have that.
Yes.
And there was some, apparently they do have some contract, he said at the very end, that actually would give them, if they had a case that came in that was like a large drug case with multiple players, that they would, if those two, uh, public, uh, or, uh, office of conflict council had it, then they did have, I think that, I think he said they had a couple of people, but like you said, it wasn't, uh, a lot, but they did have some that was out that way.
As kind of a last resort.
Yes.
Right? That hit their office of public defense first, uh, sorry, yes. Uh, and then, right, then anything that needed to be conflict out would roll over to that separate department, office of conflict. And then if there was still spillage over from that that they couldn't handle or had enough drug charges or whatever that happened to be that they needed additional, then they do have contracts. Um, but they didn't, uh, they don't use those often, uh, but they are available to them. Um, they were, uh, super helpful as far as if that's the direction that we want to go. They are willing to share, um, with our human resources department, job descriptions and things like that for things that they had already had. Um, they do break them up similar to what we have in the felony juvenile and misdemeanor cases. Um, those are, uh, contracts that we have specifically for those things. Um, so if that's something we were to go down, right, we wouldn't be starting from square one. Uh, they would be more than happy to share information with us, which was great. Um, this, if we head down this road, right, there would be, uh, additional, um, conversations with the comptroller in that it would drastically change our budget, right? We are not budgeted to operate the way that Bonneville currently is. Um, we would have to have additional discussions of how that would work. Um, so there are some things, there's a couple of things I wanna get ready for the next meeting that we have, um, upon the commission approval. Um, one, uh, we did talk to Bonneville County. Uh, I would like to reach out to a few more and just see. See if there's something even outside of the way that Bonneville's set up that might be a perfect fit for Bonning County. Uh, so Brayden and I touched base this morning and we would like to contact six different counties. Um, the basic counties, right, that we usually, uh, contact with, um, Bonneville, oh, I'm sorry, we did Bonneville. Twin, Ada County, Kootenai Canyon, right, just to see, just to see what it is they do, how they're set up, um, what pieces we could borrow, steal, right, that would fit for us. Uh, I also wanna contact the Defense Commission. Um, in talking with Bonneville, a lot of their adjustments were made, um, through recommendations or, um, uh, recommendations, um, of the Defense Commission itself, um, in helping to identify how to structure the way they wanted to go. Um, and just, uh, best practices moving forward. Um, so I would like to contact some additional counties and the Defense Commission and just bring that back before the board and let you know what these, um, you know, uh, other counties are doing and what the Defense Commission would kind of recommend, um, as far as if we move down either one of these roads that we have currently.
Question, as far as caseload, how does having them in-house impact caseload compared to our, the ones that we're currently contracted with?
That is something that Bonneville brought up, um, and, and Dave concurred, right, that an employee could handle somewhere in the realm of two hundred cases a year. And currently our contracts are set at a hundred and eight, so that would, in effect, almost double the cases that they would be able to, um, handle. Uh, but we do have a lot more, we would, as we move down there, we would just need to look at the type of cases, felony, juvenile, misdemeanor, right, because we would need to look how those are, um, the math adds up on those. And if we could do, like, how many employees we would need, um, if we were going down that road. Um, because, right, it would double the cases that they'd be able to handle. Um, but as far as the type of cases, we just wanna make sure that fits.
Because we currently have four that we have outside, right?
Yeah.
Six.
Six. Well, we have six outside?
Contracts.
Yeah, we have one that does juvenile and.
Yeah, forgot.
If you include them, yeah.
Yeah.
Now, the problem is, is that you run into, and this is, um, I actually talked to the commissioners at IAC again, I was able, they just grasped me how things go and some of the conversation is, is, um, now, they do have four employees, you know, they have two lawyers and then each lawyer has a paralegal staff. Um, and so the thing is, and like they said, um, you might have, the, the, the conflict guys, they can't interact with, the only direction is just that case handing off. They don't actually do anything other than that. And so the problem is, is you gotta be careful having, if you don't have enough conflict cases to keep those two busy is something to keep about. But then the burden of those other guys, so while we can double the caseload, it would be interesting to see what the actual, uh, caseload, you know, the dollar amount where we're at, what's going on that way. There could be some savings. I think it might be, uh, interesting to explore maybe a hybrid model, maybe have, you know, or an experiment, because we do have some really good conflict guys. Um, the, the whole thing it comes back to is having somebody in-house, I think, really mitigates a lot of the problems because the problem is, is these contracts are coming open in the market that's going on, nobody's applying for them. And so that's the biggest problem that we're running into is how do we, how do we do, solve that issue? Because if we lose many more of them, then it just kinda collapses the system. So I think if you look at having that and the, the hybrid of, you know, maybe a contract and that. And then the other question that comes back to, and this is something where the ADJ and clerk staff and everybody and public defense staff is, is a lot of times what happens is, um, the cases are, are usually referred by the public defender's office, but it does, and it quite frequently happen where the judges may just order conflict immediately. And so the judges will just order it and it goes through Carrie's office then. And sometimes it doesn't even get through Carrie's office. The judge just says, hey, that's attorneys and this, right now, go. And we're gonna have to refine that process. As much as I love the judges, uh, and we don't influence or try and do anything that way with them, but that has to be a conversation of, you, you can't just assign some random attorney that's in the pool. You gotta send it back through the system because then that way it actually gets to the correct, you know, where you're putting it. So then it goes in, into the office of conflict. And if the office of conflict doesn't have it, then it kicks down into the, into the round robin. So.
And going back to your previous point on, um, uh, not having as many conflict attorneys to choose from as we would like to. I do not see this as being a fix as far as the availability of attorneys, right? We are having just as much struggle filling employee positions.
Say that.
Yes, as we are filling contracts.
They get one for a long time with very few applications.
Yeah.
So I don't see that being a fix. What I do see is being able to double that, that one person can handle twice as much in an internal perspective as a hundred and eight cases if they're a contract. So I don't, right, it's gonna be a difficult road to hoe, which either way we go.
Yeah.
Um, uh, it is a difficult labor market, whether we're contracting or having them be an employee. Um, but there is a difference in that caseload that they'd be able to handle for us.
What was their total conflict budget?
That I don't know, but they did say they would share their budget.
Yeah.
So we can get that too.
Terrell, I wondered, did you and IAC talk to Twin Falls County Commissioners about that at all?
Uh, they have a super conflict office, their, their office, they just have one firm that basically handles everything.
Okay.
So it would be like, if we had a big law firm that just wanted to do it, I think they pay them like two hundred twenty-five thousand or two hundred fifty thousand dollars a year and that's just the contract and then they just handle it.
Okay.
And so that's something you could look at doing. That, again, the state statute and Public Defense Commission, there's not really a, a set way of doing that. It's kinda how counties have figured out how to do it, which fits their model because apparently in Twin Falls, there was a fairly large law firm that was willing to do it.
Sure.
And so, and it's actually, I think it's somebody, the law firm, it was an offshoot and that's all they do. Is they're a law firm, but they don't take, they just do conflict for the county, that's it.
So timing wise, I have a couple of quick questions. One, I'm getting ready to set up recurring entries. Do you want me to not do that on our conflict attorneys? Because normally we just pay them every month? Or do you want me to have them, we can have Shanda contact them and start invoicing us?
I think.
I think he'd, I think he'd return, this is gonna take a while. This is a long.
It'll, it'll be this budget year that we'll be involved with them, in my opinion.
And in order to get out of those contracts, right, there are steps and things that I'm certain we could notify auditing at the same time, right, and have time to switch over those.
And, and the main thing it comes back to, I don't think we're gonna be terminating any contracts because of the lack of labor or anything like that. I, I, and I want that to be kinda clear. Um, we don't have the labor force and we don't have the ability to do this, but we have to start coming up with options of, because I'm afraid when the, the contracts that are held, um, several of the attorneys, I don't know how much longer they're gonna want to continue doing it. And if they just decide to quit doing it next week and they finish out their caseload and give us the thirty-day out, we could have a serious problem. And so I think if we can get one where, hey, you do have benefits, there's a retirement plan, some people, because of the stability, would rather have that. And so I think it just gives us an option.
Their argument.
Yeah.
When we met with them on contracts.
Yeah.
Well, this is what your, your employees get. Um, we don't get that, so if they want, if we move in that direction, they get what they requested.
Yeah.
Yeah, another question? Any other question?
I lost it.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you. Let's go ahead and, and contact the other counties, like you said. Uh, continue with Terrell, uh, and then Carrie, I think we need to have him involved with the two.
Judge Naffs as well, we need to have some.
Jared, the PDC regional rep is out for the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
We'll have to go to Catherine, I think, is her name, his boss, who is he?
That was the other thing. We usually thought the application for the PDC grant, since this is probably gonna cost more than the contracts, we won't do that until April, I believe. So that might be something, maybe we can get some more money.
You can.
Um, if we put this off.
You can, you can.
But if we put this off to next fiscal year, that would help us fund it.
Right.
Because right now, just trying to do some rough-ish math, we're looking at probably half a million dollars.
Oh, yeah, and so that would be part of the.
So, and we only have four hundred and seventeen, I did it.
Yeah.
So, I mean, most of it could potentially be covered, but.
And, and that's why.
That doesn't count office space.
And that comes back to, yeah, that comes back to like my point of, if you did this and that was what the, uh, Bonneville County Commissioners recommended, is if you started it, you'd start with one, one attorney and one staff member and, and go from there. Because they said that they had, um, I think they might've had more to begin with and they, it took them a bit to kinda right-size where they were at.
I think they said they started with two.
You know, it was two, and, oh, no, they're hiring their third, that's what they're doing right now, is they're doing that. And they, they just cautioned us just, hey, look at that and also the shock to the budget. Because if, I mean, we can't fill contracts right now and those contracts, basically we're not having that contract. And if there's one or two that we don't have contracts, could we move monies around in there? Would we have to look for additional funds? When could we start it then? Because like, like I said, I see this probably starting next fiscal, next October. Um, maybe sooner if we had the ability to do so with funds not being used because those contracts aren't being executed. But really, I, I think it'd probably be in October.
Yeah.
It's reality.
Okay.
It's just gonna take us a long time to.
Yeah, it takes a lot to set it up.
Yeah.
And as we think that way, we, we need to think about what we're gonna do over here too, about juvenile, moving over there and taking it all.
Yeah.
Whether we have a public, or the contracts.
I.
Over here, I just, just thoughts as we.
Yeah.
Start going through all of it.
Yep.
The ripple effect.
The ripple effect.
Anything else?
Uh, no, if you were good with at least the fact-finding direction, right, that we'll bring back to you, um, here in a couple of weeks, um, as we can get schedules aligned, um, and then we'll just continue on having a discussion.
Great. Thank you, Shanda.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Shanda.
All right, Christie.
Christie Davenport, Management Assistant. Um, I was contacted by a lady by the name of Mary Stickles last week. She is with an organization called Kids Backing the Blue. Um, their goal is to show kids that law enforcement officers are good and do good things for our community as well as protect us and keep us safe. Um, and they, they want to have kids have a way to connect with law enforcement officers in a safe environment. So her request was that we put a box in the hall in the courthouse to collect, um, new and gently-used coats. And, um, she would, she would like it as soon as possible and then she would be picking it up on November eleventh. They have set a time on the thirteenth of November to, um, distribute the coats at the Pocatello Police Department. I did double-check with Officer Cates of the PPD that, that he has been in contact with her and he has. He also double-checked that it was a legit organization and it is. Um, so I just wanted to ask your permission to put a box to collect coats in the hall.
It's a good project. I have mixed feelings because I don't want, I don't want a bunch of boxes everywhere.
Typically.
From every group.
Typically, we don't have organizations and stuff to do outside the courthouse. But it's one of those things that, yeah, I'm, I'm kinda Jeff on that, that.
She is going to come and pick them up as needed so that they don't overflow and look, you know, tacky.
So it'll be now till November?
Till the eleventh.
Basically.
The tenth, actually, because we're closed on the eleventh, so.
I'm, I, like I said, something like this, um, yeah, I'm okay with it. It's just as long as they're minding the box and stuff like that. Um, I think somebody had one, right, when I came into office and it had overflowed everywhere. And if, nobody could find them to come get, I don't remember what they were collecting, but it was.
So one box.
Mm-hmm.
And I'd say by the abandoned elevator.
Okay.
Yeah, right there around the corner.
Sure.
Right there by, as you come down the stairs.
And, uh, right there, it'll get some attention.
Okay.
And, uh, and if it isn't taken care of, then it leaves.
Okay. Okay.
All right?
All right, I'll let her know. Thank you.
Thank you, Christie.
Welcome. Let's go ahead and pull some chairs up.
Pull it on up. I'll just drive down.
It was raining.
Raining?
Raining through Twin Falls and Burley pretty good, then it dried up out there in Fall.
What's up, Matt?
Not bad. I could pretty much do it on autopilot anyway.
In your Tesla?
Good to see you.
I wish, yeah. I work for the state. I don't have enough money to buy a Tesla. It's a Ford.
I passed some dude that was sleeping in his Tesla and it kinda freaked me out, to tell you the truth.
I, I passed a guy that was reading books and it threw him down.
Appreciate it.
So can they talk on their cell phone while they're driving? Uh, it, so you think about that, like the city of Pocatello has an ordinance that says no cell phones? Because it's distracted driving. Well, what happens if you're in a Tesla that's self-driving and you're talking, just saying?
Well, I think there's still an open debate on what self-driving means. My wife's car will keep me in the lane, right? It's got the.
Right.
Lane assistance.
But I don't think I'd trust it to keep me from dying. It's really good when it's about eleven o'clock and you're tired and it's dark, you could turn that on and it's kinda like driving by Braille.
Right.
It'll just bounce in down the road.
You can do that now, it's wrong.
If you, you know, if you kinda start to fall asleep, it'll catch ya, but I don't think I'd wanna, like, take a nap, you know, so.
Not advised in motorhomes, is what you're saying.
Yeah, that's right.
I drove my buddy's and it's amazing.
Yeah.
Tesla.
The corners, stoplight, whatever, it's awesome.
Well, welcome. Uh, I talked to George the other day and, and invited him down to come and just give us a, an update of where we're at and what's going on and, so, where are we at? There's a chair over here too.
We got two here.
Well.
Where are we at? I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a couple of introductions first. I've got some new people with me. This is Brett Jarvis. He's the Deputy Attorney General. It's gonna be assigned to. He's the deputy attorney general, it's gonna be assigned to property tax kind of going forward, so you might, you may or may not have to deal with him once in awhile, hopefully not much. Um, you know, Matt and Jason, I have a, I have a new administrative assistant for property tax, it's a new position and I actually brought her with me. Yeah, you can sit up here if you want, Allison, but just to, just to get the feel of what we do, so this is Allison Dodge. Um, so I would expect that many, most of the phone calls you make to the tax commission, she'll, she'll have first, so. And, um, what I'm, you know, obviously the plan is to train her up so I never have to do anything, but that's.
Good luck.
Typical state guys, come on now.
So, your progress on your five-year plan is looking pretty good. Think Matt's got some notes, but essentially you need to do about, the appraiser's office, the assessor's office needs to do about seven per appraiser, about seven appraisals a day from here to the end of the period to be done. That's very doable, um, you know, if it was more than fifteen, then we might, might wonder about that, but seven's very doable. Obviously, they're not doing seven a day. There's, is that three commercial, four residential, right?
Yeah, so we've got, uh, the breakdown, so based on the number of days remaining, so working days, uh, with the target date being sometime between mid-April and the first part of May, uh, just to allow for some time for certification and getting assessment notices prepared and those kind of things. Uh, you're looking at about three per day per appraiser on the commercial end and four per day currently, um, on the residential end. And then I just kind of broke down, uh, our average statewide expectation by property type. And for residential, you're looking at about ten if it's just vacant land, where an appraiser can do more than one parcel. Um, they go pretty quick when it's just land and five per day is the typical expectation on residential approved. So, well within that range, so, uh, everything's looking good. Uh, from the commercial end of things, uh, I met with Sheri and Anita, um, last week or maybe the week before, anyhow. Uh, just said, hey, commercial is, is, that number's not falling at the same rate that, that we would typically like to see, especially as we're getting through kind of the nice end of weather and reappraisal end of things, so, uh, just made them aware of that. They're still within that acceptable range where it's not raising any huge flags to us, but, but certainly it's an area concerned where we want to make sure that those stay on pace, uh, better to do so in October than April.
Yeah.
So, uh, just making them aware, um, Jason, myself are planning to go back across the street, um, this afternoon and, and work with staff on trying to outline some, some, a plan for, uh, getting out and getting those fielded. Uh, the reality is, I think they're probably not going to be entered into the system. I know you guys are aware of, of trying to get all of those parcels, the converted parcels entered into, pro bound into the CAMA system, uh, reality is that's probably unrealistic at this point, um, but you really need to get those reviewed, whether or not they're put into the system, but physically re-inspected. So that's gonna be the primary focus at this point, um, certainly through this review year. Uh, and that, that gets you clear of this five-year plan and into next, and then make that expectation, you can certainly prioritize those for the next five-year plan on getting those into the system, but as of right now, the accomplishment of the five-year plan is probably priority.
So, who and, and when does the next five-year plan, who develops that completely and, and when is that due?
So it's actually due in February, um, and George and I will review those, um, this spring. Uh, I forget when the notification is, I think we have to notify the county. They're due to us by February, I think we have to notify you by April.
I think it's April, yeah.
And then, uh, and then if there's additional information needed, uh, really it has to be approved before June, I think.
Cause that's when the, yeah, basically the, you know, the start of the plan obviously is the end of the, it's the end of June, really, so. Uh, but, and, and we'll have, uh, Matt and I are gonna go on a roadshow and have a class to train assessors' offices and what we're expecting with a five-year plan. I know there's a lot of new people, you know, you're, when, it's only every five years, sometimes you skip assessors even, right? So, but, uh, so I know your assessor hasn't been here for a five-year plan, Anita surely has and she's got a good. I think, I think it goes without saying, Anita's had a pretty good handle on stuff for the last five months, right? So, um, so that's good, but we're gonna have a plan.
It's been longer than that, she's got a lot of years.
She's done this awhile.
Anyway, you know, we're, we're gonna teach a class on that, but it's a pretty standard, it's really a pretty standard document, you know, once a county has one put together, you don't have to reinvent the wheel every year, um, unless you've had some issues. I think the issues you guys had didn't have anything to do with the plan, you know, it wasn't, it wasn't a, the plan didn't imagine parameters that couldn't be done, they just didn't get done, so. I don't, I don't see a major problem with that.
No, and I've been working with, uh, obviously Anita and Sheri on kind of outlining that moving forward. Uh, it sounds like they kind of want to stick with what has been done in the past, which is accomplishing things by review year. So, usually typically in counties and, and that happens a lot where they'll, their twenty twenty-three, which is the first year of the next five-year plan, they'll operate off of review year twenty eighteen, so they'll just take the first year of last year's plan and review those as in the first year of the next plan. The basis of the five-year plan is to make sure that they have a plan moving forward and that they also have the budget and employees to accomplish that plan.
Review a little bit what the five-year plan is and how that works, cause we have a lot of people in BOE says, well, you're only supposed to appraise my property every five years and, and so.
So, uh.
Just clear that up.
So the five-year plan, property's assessed every year. And, and that's done with mass appraisal techniques, so you, you don't individually go out and look at every property every year and do an appraisal like a fee appraiser would, right? You, you use market conditions in different geographic areas to make adjustments on properties in those areas based on what's going on. But every five years, every property does have to have a site visit and that's eyes on it, on the ground, somebody has to go out and look at the property. Now, for some types of property, you know, ag land, that's pretty easy, right? You can pretty much drive by and, is it ag? You know, it, it's, it's self-explanatory with a lot of, other properties that, that, you know, like a residential property, that's where the appraiser's gonna be looking at, uh, has anything been added to it? What's the condition? Uh, is, has there been changes? Some with commercial properties, sometimes it's go inside, you know, you actually have to do a site visit and see what they have, personal property stuff and that kind of thing, so. So it's a little bit different depending what type of property it is, but it's a, it's a site visit by an appraiser that works in, in the, in the assessor's office. And that has to be done every five years. So, um, if that works well, then about twenty percent of them are done every year, right? That makes sense. If it doesn't work well, then sometimes we have to do some catch-up. And of course, you've got, the other part of that is new properties. I don't know how many more parcels we have this year than rid five years ago, but it's quite a few for your county.
Yeah.
It's, it's many thousands, so.
And I think it's gonna continue.
Yeah.
Um, real quick, uh, the last time you guys were here, we had a discussion about quality.
Yeah.
And that's, uh, why we had additional training and other things to just help, uh, with the new staff and people and make sure that we're all operating and calibrated together. How's that gone?
Yeah, I, it's gone really, really well. Uh, I think the, uh, staff that's over there now, I think I expressed it last time, I think they're, they're eager to do a good job. Um, they've, they've been out doing, they've been very busy doing site visits and getting some training. Uh, you've got a good mix of, of different expertise, uh, from the standpoint of, uh, really analytical and data, data oriented uh, versus construction-based, um, and so it's, it's a well-rounded staff. Uh, because they are new, they're, they're working in teams and they're kind of, uh, learning from each other on the go. Uh, but they've got a good plan and procedures in place now, uh, moving forward, so I've, I feel comfortable as long as they stated that plan and, and stick with it, uh, that, that, that you'll have quality appraisals.
So, we've had contractors doing commercial for the last, probably forever, um, long time, uh, now we've brought that in-house and how are we doing there?
Uh, I think there still needs to be additional training there. I think, uh, um, I, my understanding, uh, was that uh, your former contract had a provision in there where they were supposed to provide some training, um, before, uh, exiting. Uh, I don't know how much of that was actually, um, put in place, so I think there's probably some additional, um, training and some, uh, ideas and some expertise that could be offered certainly, and Jason and I are planning again on going over there, uh, later today and offering up our, our assistance on that.
So let me quantify that for you, or qualify it, I guess, because it's probably both, but I think that there's, we have some concern about your commercial like value level, you know, but I'm not worried about it.
Could you?
Nothing that's not fixable, nothing that's not trainable, nothing that's not, you know, that the assessor's office doesn't have the ability to monitor and correct as needed, so.
Could you, could you elaborate on that? I mean, uh, the value, are you concerned, is it too high, is it too low, is it too far outside the mean? I mean, what's the?
Yeah, I think a lot of the values have been in place for some time and because you've got different people in different capacities now, uh, trying to put rationale to how those values were arrived at, um, is a challenge because there's not a lot of documentation, so I think there's just numbers in place and trying to tie those back to anything tangible is difficult. So really, they're working from the ground up, um, but they also need to have some basis for making an adjustment, so.
So, uh, when you say been there awhile, I mean, are we talking the last year, the last five years, last ten years, fifteen years?
I think for probably five would be a safe number, um, not saying that they've stayed stagnant at that, but the base rate is certain.
The base rates are left there.
Yeah.
So should our commercial property people be a little bit nervous about seeing a spike come in the property value?
Yeah, I think there's probably gonna, I mean, currently, and this is just, this is just in general. Um, you're looking, I mean, you've got rates in there and under a dollar, uh, a square foot for commercial.
What would be a good rule of thumb?
Uh, I don't, from what I saw, I didn't see anything under two. So, yeah, I mean, now not to say that everything's gonna double, just because, but, but at the end of the day, when you see commercial land values less than what your residential is selling for.
Something's wrong?
Yeah, you're, you're upset, you're tipped, uh, unless there's something really, uh, influencing that, uh, shouldn't be that way.
And it's probably still residual, we've been having this conversation for years, right? We're all familiar with each other.
Yes, we are.
You know, this is probably still residual of pre those conversations.
Yeah.
You know, there's just a lot, there's a lot to, that that office has to do to get everything where it should be. And, and we've kind of been, you know, for the first couple of years of this process, we were really working on emergency, right? There were, there were things that were emergencies that had to be fixed and that's both on the appraisal side and on the assessment side as far as technology, right? With the new system, there was nothing in it and, and, and I think Matt's, you know, that's one of the things about some of these properties now still is even with the review, they won't be entered into the system yet because there's just only so many fingers to push buttons. Um, but, like I said, I, I don't feel like, and jump in if you, there's nothing here that isn't fixable. Um, the commercial's probably the last residual thing, it's the hardest thing to work on, it's the, one of the hardest things to train somebody in how to do an appraisal. And so this is naturally, it's kind of the natural course, as everything gets better, we're kind of swinging into the last few things, so.
Yeah, and commercials, the challenge on commercial everywhere is lack of information.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, I think you've got somewhere around three thousand residential sales versus, you know, fifty commercial sales. So it's easier to glean data from three thousand than it is from fifty. And especially, commercial is so diverse from business type to business type, so even out of those fifty, how many are actually usable on apartments or how many are usable on office? So, it, it, it is a challenge, but, but I think to curtail off of what George is saying is, yeah, I mean, think about where we've been a few years ago versus where we're at now, and now we're talking about trying to dial in the data as opposed to just putting the fire out and getting, getting things accomplished, so come a long way.
Well, I, I think we are, I think we're headed in the right direction, I honestly do, uh, and bringing that in-house instead of a contractor, I think that we have a lot better control and say.
Yeah.
Uh, and then appreciate you coming down specifically and, and giving the training and stuff, uh, our relationship, like I say, three years ago, I didn't know where we was at, I don't think anybody else did. But I think right now, just like I said, I called George and, and you guys are willing to come down and, and give us a, a briefing on, on where we're at and, and as long as we're able to do that and keep things going in the right direction, and Bannan County's gonna do okay.
Well, and I know staff was working with, uh, some of the brokers in town about, and they really were starting to work on that south fifth quarter because it was one of the, um, there were some of the values that you could tell the base probably had been that way for fifty years. I mean, I hate to say it, but when you're looking, there's a couple of those properties that, you know, and while you're adding growth onto it, it's where you started, you're so far behind in what has happened. Um, and I know a lot of the brokers have had issues with it because as the data that they do have, they have people that are looking, well, it's only, you're assessing is only this and then we go through and we buy it and we do it and then the next time it gets hit and it gets adjusted to actually what's going on in the market. I mean, we've had, we've had commercial ground that's sold for ten to fifteen dollars a square foot. And, and now, again, it's not all the same, but it's kind of some shock to people when they start looking and they're like, oh, whoa, 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 wait a sec, that's not what we had in mind. And so I think it's better to paint the picture upfront and just as close as what you can have, so people know what they're walking, walking into. Instead of, hey, you bought it, it's only supposed to be this, and then all of a sudden they get that assessment and it freaks them out.
Yeah. Yeah, and I, I think the big thing is trying to do it uniformly, instead of, you know, picking and poaching, uh, which is really, I mean, if, if you're gonna make the adjustment, make the adjustment across the board. And, and that way, everybody's kind of sharing the burden instead of the, the places that, you know, um, that are buying or selling and and then the properties around it stay stagnant again, which is.
Well, and the other thing too is, again, we've had this conversation and talking about taxation policy and levies and all this other stuff and people, um, there are a lot, there are areas that are not in parity. And, and again, if everything is in parity, the, the, the tax burden will be shared equally across the board and while your assessment may go up, your levy rate may go down. And that's the one thing that just communicates to people that, that's, it's not a bad thing to have everybody's properties assessed correctly.
And, and, and you know, kind of to your point about values of the commercial property, like are they gonna get hit, a spike or whatever? The one good thing about commercial property is that it tends to not, it tends to be more of a, it, it'll go just as high, but it tends to be sloped curves. Residential property, you'll see residential property as it goes up or down through the years, it'll have these peaks. And the commercial property tends to follow that curve, but later and in a more, in a softer curve. And so, yeah, you are gonna see, I mean, I, I think there's no doubt that you're gonna see the commercial values go up. But I don't think it's gonna be, uh, you know, like the residential has the past couple of years, I mean, everybody, you know, all over the country, they're looking at Idaho going, look at that. That's crazy, look at that pot of whales or what, you know, I mean, it's just insane. That, the commercial property's probably not gonna go up that, in that manner. Um, it'll follow the market, it'll follow the market, so it's gonna be delayed anyway and it'll also, in, in your particular case, it's following on because now we're getting to that, in the assessor's office, right? That's the next, when you've got nine hundred parcels left that are commercial to, to do the, in the five-year plan and there's only thirty-five hundred of them or something in the whole county. So you're heavily in that five-year plan with the site visits, you're heavily, uh, looking heavily at commercial in this last period, so. And some of that was because of the way that we discussed before, where we kind of, to make the five-year plan, we went after low hanging fruit, right?
Right.
Let's go out to easy stuff to get that five-year plan back up and then now, and we said this was gonna happen, you know? Now we're running into the hard part at the very end, so, but, but, but it doesn't look like the hard part is an impossible part. There's plenty of hands over there and plenty of support from us that you guys will be able to get it done, so.
So, um, Matt, since you've spent some time over here and have watched us grow over the last three or four years, do you feel like we've got the policies and procedures in place now or at least making the adjustments necessary to, to keep us from getting behind again going forward?
I do, I, I think, again, uh, I think you've got staff in place that is, is different than what has been in place in years past where you've got people that are anxious to do a good job and, and, uh, they wanna learn, they're sponges over there, which is a good thing. And they're really taking, taking advantage of the opportunities given and trying to delegate some of those out, so it's not everything's in a silo. So I think, I think you've got some ownership over there, which is, is a good thing to have.
Good.
So I, I, I feel like you're in as good a place as I've seen Bannan County.
Okay, and so with the, with the appraisers going out two by two, that's, that's a little outside of the norm, isn't it? Most people go out one at a time, or?
It varies across the state, uh, in some, some counties, they'll, they'll use the tandems, uh, one just, um, for protection. Uh, some, some areas, they don't feel comfortable going out by themselves. Some, some areas, they don't feel comfortable going out by themselves. And also, it's, it's a way to avoid blame, right? Something gets broke on the property that that appraiser was at, they could blame the appraiser even though they might not have had anything to do with it. So it's not unusual, it's not unheard of. I would say there, there's a balance in the state between going out in singles and going out in doubles.
Probably, I think a lot of that initially here at least was also training. You can find somebody that knows something and you can hire somebody that knows nothing and you can put them together. And that's definitely not a bad course of action either. I mean, if you have a, if you have a really experienced appraiser, there's no better person for someone to go with that doesn't know anything than that, so.
And I do like how they're adjusting to where they're rotating the pairs. So you've got, you've got two that are still in training, they're not certified, so they can't go out by themselves. But they're teamed up for a month and then they rotate those through. So I think everybody's kind of getting to work with everybody and kind of, again, I think they have different strengths and so they can kind of glean off of those differences.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah.
Anita, you're being real quiet over there. Any concerns, any comments?
You see me being quiet?
No, I'm just saying that the last five months, things have run really smooth and we appreciate it.
First of all, I'd just like these guys to know that I appreciate your willingness. Matt and Jayce get calls from me a lot, help, they've been good to work with and I appreciate your training. And just because I've been here more than five years, I can tell you that our commercial has been in trouble for at least 40, really seriously. I mean, we've had contractors through the year, I was even telling Matt, somebody at my contractor, and then she went to jail, but he was our contractor. So this was a million years ago, but.
I was like, what?
And so our commercials always had issues. I would love to see our commercial department do way better and succeed because we need to, we definitely need to. And I know I made this statement before to Matt and other people over there that experience is important, but the willingness that we have over there right now with some of those appraisers to like Matt's stuck it up with his sponge, like a sponge, that willingness to me is trumping experience because they are, they're amazing what they're doing, what they've come up with with spreadsheets and maps and everything. They're amazing and they share it with me and they're doing a great job. And we're gonna get there, we're gonna get there. And I just appreciate patience on all parts. And I know that at least within the last five months, I've tried to communicate with you guys too or I have communicated, given the communication through. And I want that to continue so that we can let you know where we are, so you don't always have to call George. We don't want George calling.
And it isn't that we don't trust you over there, but I have appreciated the relationship that we've developed.
And I agree.
I can just call him up and say, hey.
And I agree, there's support over here to come over here and be able to support us. I agree, I appreciate that 100%. But just want you to know that you can always call and we'll give you an update too where we are. But I, you know, yeah, do I have some of the same concerns, Matt? Sure, because we've discussed it and I do have some concerns.
So Anita, can you?
We're working forward and we're moving forward.
Can you, and maybe Matt, speak to what you see we're lacking in our commercial stuff? Or what do we need to go to that next level? Because now you've been at it a few months, maybe we know the right questions to ask or the right things that we didn't know a few months ago, so.
And probably most of that's just training on, because they do have some questions as to some different things and I know they've discussed it with Matt. We've actually sent them over to both of our commercial appraisers. We've actually sent them to Twin Falls for a day and let them visit with those commercial appraisers and kind of get some, and we're trying to get some new manuals for them, commercials, which we're having problems getting those manuals. But we're getting some new manuals upgraded for them. And it's just Marshall and Swift, it's not anything we've done, it's just Marshall and Swift being slow. And so we're trying to get them the tools that they need. And, you know, we've visited with them just two days ago about getting out in the field more and doing more contact because they weren't doing that as much. And, but we're gonna get them out in the field, get their feet on the ground. And I think it's just a matter of, I think sometimes, and this is just my opinion, but I think sometimes you see residential and then you've worked in residential and you know how it all flows. And then you go over here to commercial and it's a different animal, it really is. And so I think it's just a matter of realizing that, yes, it's a different animal, but it still needs to flow like resi. And so I think some of that needs to come across in training as well.
Yeah, and I think on top of that is, it's just, they gotta just jump into the fire, right? And then figure out what you know and what you don't know. And what you don't know, we'll figure it out.
So it's not necessarily a staffing issue, it's just more of a training, comfort level?
I believe so.
Matt, maybe, and maybe you can speak to this, but my understanding, I've been down here for years has been, for whatever reason, we have less commercial sales than communities that are this size. We would expect more sales. And so I don't know if that's a not reporting or if there really is the market not, just doesn't sell.
I think it's a combination.
Call the city of Pottell, or council in there.
Yeah.
And that, you know, that's a big issue, right? Because an appraisal is only as good as the numbers that you base it on. And if there's not very many numbers, it's hard to, it's, it makes you more reticent to change a value, right? If you don't really think you'd.
So Anita, guys, those numbers that you're looking for, are those coming through from Realtor data, some of?
Some are on the MLS. We are gonna reinstitute sending out sell letters and commercial, we'll get hit with those. Whether they return, we usually get like a 10, 15% return on sell certification letters. But anything we can get would be helpful. And if we can get that report better with the commercial brokers, hopefully there'll be some sharing.
So I'll tell you, just in experience in 20 years of selling real estate in this community, it is pretty much common knowledge amongst brokers that there are few commercial agents that sell as much as 50% of what they sell commercially goes off the MLS, it never hits the MLS. And I don't know if that's common in other places or not, or if they're, if we're just not getting the data or if it is truly a lack of sales in commercial. Because there, there are a few guys that sell 15, 20 commercial a year here that I know I've never seen one of their listings on the MLS ever in 20 years.
And I don't think that's, that's not uncommon with commercial property.
And I'm hoping that through the sales of recognition letters and once we get the two commercial appraisers trained, I know that they want to get out and do more one-on-one with some of these brokers and get to know them. And so hopefully that will help too. So hopefully that trend's gonna change and we will get more.
That, that goes to, you guys have seen these waves, right? First wave here was residential, people don't know how it works. And the second wave was ag, right? People don't know how it works. Well, now you got the third wave still, commercial, right? That's been something that hasn't been talked about as much here. And, and a lot of that, a lot of the, the things you saw, especially with ag in the state, where you actually sit down with those farmers and explain why you want the data and what you're gonna use with it, they're not so reticent to share it. But they have to understand what's in it, you know, it's just like anybody else, right? What's in it for me? And, and, you know, and for commercial people, what's in it for me is that you talk about, it's that stability. It's that I know what's coming. It's, hey, I know that the guy, the guy with the strip mall across the street is getting treated just like my strip mall. And so that's something that, you know, that might just take some work from everybody here to have those conversations and, you know?
And that goes to why you wanna be out in the public, right? Certainly, I'd feel better if I had an opportunity to visit with you at my property so I know that you've come out and you've visited. And whether or not I agree with the end result, but at least I know that you're out. It's not just being done programmatically and it's not being done arbitrarily. It's actually boots on ground.
And Mr. Chair, if I may, the, one of the silver linings that I see from, we took the low hanging fruit and now we have a tough year, that's definitely doable. But we're gonna see a diverse smattering of, of commercial properties. And then we go into the new five-year plan, we don't have to push those off till the end of the five-year plan. They can be done throughout the year and we'll have the experience that we'll be able to help them work through in dealing with them this year and maybe keep some of those tougher properties more current, more fresh as we work through them in the next five-year plan.
And you, you talked about it a little bit, ag was a concern last time you was here. And then we had our appraiser leave us. Where are we at with that now and are we in good shape or?
Yeah, so I'm gonna work with Shane, one of the appraisers over there, who's pretty familiar with a lot of farmers and ranchers in the area. Work with him on calculating the agricultural rates for the coming year. He seemed a little deer in headlights at first and now he's calmed down and realizes it's, it's, it's a process, but certainly he'll be trained up on it and feel very comfortable with it.
Good. You haven't had the operating talk. What is going on in the Attorney General's office and taxes?
Why are you?
Need a specific attorney.
Why are you here? It's not that I don't like Lawrence's office, it's just anytime you get a little, yeah.
He's here at my request. And I'll let him talk all he wants, but I wanted to see, so I wanted him to see how we should be interacting with counties. Because we have a very good relationship here. And that's because of a lot of incredible hard work by everybody that's here, right? Because we didn't a few years ago. And so he's, he's new to the property tax game, I'm taking him under my wing. I'm still, you know, I'm still an attorney, right? He's the next guy that's got my former job. So I wanted to make sure that he understood what we do here and how we interact with people and everything else. Now, one, one of these days when we have a, you know, a complete meltdown in a county, I'll take him there too and I'll say, this is how we don't want it to happen. That would have been, that would have been the meeting here with 150, 200 people pouring out in the hole and everything we had a few years ago, right? So, so we're never gonna have one of those here again, right?
Nope.
Okay, so we'll take him someplace else for that, but.
Yeah, I am impressed with the relationships that have been built here. I've only been doing this for three months now. Like George said, I kind of replaced his replacement. But it's, it's exciting stuff to get out and work with the counties and other people.
Well, you're always welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Unless it's bad news.
Then I'll talk to him.
Just don't, just don't. But it's always good news.
Tell us a little bit about yourself and.
I'm new to Idaho. I've only been in the position two months, so I'm, I'm learning. So I'm glad George brought me out and it's nice to meet everybody.
I was gonna say, so you're the problem that all the values are going up. Trying to give her a hard time.
Trust me, she gets a lot of it.
So you come from California, huh?
Everybody does.
That's all you hear.
Yes.
Questions?
I just want to again say thank you for all your hard work. Thank you for the assessor's office for working and just appreciate, again, the opportunity that you guys took the time to come down here and visit with us today. Thank you.
Absolutely. And again, it's, this is the job of the commission. People don't understand this and this is something I always have this conversation with is, everybody's probably wondering what I was doing. We sign all of our documents. We don't, we don't use stamps, we don't do anything. And so I was the last one and so I was signing a bunch of stuff. And so the three of us, we take it very serious whenever we're talking about stuff and just making sure that we're in the know of everything that's going on. And that's, that's the point of our jobs with all of the offices is we, we wanna know firsthand where we at, what's going on. If we have a deficiency of resources, it is our job to provide resources. And if we're having an issue that's there, we've just found that it's the best, let's have that relationship, like you said, where we can actually have a conversation. We were up at IAC this last week and it's funny when you have counties that don't even know who you guys are because they haven't had a problem, let's face it. But, and that's one thing that we've, that they always ask me is like, so what should we, you know, I had a new commissioner talk to me, I'm like, the tax commission guy? Yeah, you need to know who they are. That's, that's your, kinda on the list, you know, Legislative Services Office, those kind of guys. And, and those are the things that we need to do as commissioners. So when we have you guys come down here, we really appreciate it because it helps us reaffirm, you know, that trust but verify method of, hey, this is what's going on. And so for us as commissioners to know that, yep, we have applied resources correctly or we are deficient or maybe we are over in some way and we need to allocate those resources somewhere else in the county. So thank you very much for coming down and having the conversation and eat it buddies and stink.
Well, some of these counties that have never had a BOE commissioner, there's something wrong. I, I just, there's gotta be something wrong in that county.
If no one is complaining, as an attorney, you know that the best contract or the best, you know, result of mediation is when everybody leaves the room and they're all pissed off. That was the best contract that could have happened. That was the right one. If somebody's happy and someone's not happy, it's not necessarily the one that's happy that got the better end of the deal, but somebody got a better end of the deal. And so, yeah, I, and you know, I, you guys know that I've, I made this campaign promise, I call it, it was almost three years ago, to visit every county and then COVID and everything hit and I've probably been here 20 times, but I haven't been to a lot of others, so. You get a lot of good attention, I guess.
We've given the opportunity to drive through them.
But, but we, you know, and you, and you three have heard me say this several times in trainings that everybody, all of our jobs, for property taxes, it's the same job. It's get a value on property that's the correct market value and is uniform, right? And, and so I just, I appreciate counties like you guys, that, like your county, that are willing to have these conversations with us and, and learn from each other and, and have those tough conversations too, right? Sometimes you wanna avoid those and those are the ones you really need to have. But I, I appreciate the relationship we've developed down here. I think it's a real model for every county in the state, so.
I think we've proved that we're willing to have the tough discussions.
So. And come out better for it.
We have, we have. Well, thank you and like I say, we, we appreciate you coming down. We appreciate these meetings. And like Anita says, we can just go across the street and talk with her, but. And I'll, she, she sees it every day. You guys walk in and I see the state and how we compare and that's why we appreciate the opportunity. And like I say, we just come from being in Boise and going to the Association of Idaho Counties. Some of the stuff that they talked about up there, I mean, you guys set the amounts for agriculture, for timber and stuff. I mean, some of the things and just seeing how the state lines up. And no doubt, property taxes, residential has ended up taking a bigger burden and anytime that happens, you talk to more people. So we appreciate what you do and you coming down and talking to us.
Absolutely. Yeah, thanks for having us.
Anybody else?
I'll volunteer Jayce to come down anytime you want.
That's up though.
No, I'm good.
There's down.
He's a far, he has a longer trip than he used to, right?
Well, thank you, thank you very much. Appreciate it. With that being said.
Yes.
I don't know.
Oh.
Yeah.
We apologize to you.
I, I met him, Braden.
This is our chief of staff.
I, I can't wait, I can't wait for the first belligerent person to walk in the office.
Well, there won't be any if he stands in the door.
Me, Braden.
Just tell you, the first week he was hired, I was walking down the hallway and I had Scott, who has now gone up to the event center. He's still with us, but I had Braden on one side and Scott on the other side, walking down this hall. And Scott says, well, how do you feel right now? And I go, well, honestly, I feel pretty safe. You two on each side of me.
I, I remember after one of these meetings, your former chairman almost getting into a fistfight with a reporter out in this hall right here. So there have been some contentious meetings in the past.
We still allow the reporters in.
John sitting in the back, be like, yeah, John, we're not throwing anything at you today.
Anyway, thank you.